Hey, looks like we have a full house. So Nanette, go ahead, please.
Okay, I had two items I wanted to add. One is a discussion of the schedule for budget review. About the budget review process. And second is, I would like to discuss the matter of the board, the Board of Selectmen's decision to reduce the salary of the upcoming for selectmen.
Okay, so you should put that in the form of two different motions.
Oh, they have to be motions?
Yeah, to add to the agenda at this point.
Sorry, okay. I would like to add, I move to add the, an item of relating to this first selectman's salary.
Is there a second? Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries? Okay.
I move to add the the schedule for Board of Finance budget review for 2021 to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Okay, they'll come after the selection.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also make a motion to go into an executive session after we've completed today's business prior to our adjournment.
Okay, is there a second?
For, you got, you have to say for one of us.
Yeah.
Discuss personnel issues and compensation in general.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we should probably have some discussion of this because I'm not sure how an executive session would work by Zoom meeting. Barbara and I talked about this the other day and
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
Well, what we could do, if I may interject, at the very end, the way we used, we handled it when we were all meeting in person, I can end the meeting once you're done with everything and then we can just say what time that was and then somebody can email me. And just let me know what time you came out, went and came out of executive session if anything was resolved. And then do your adjournment motion then. So it'll be in the meeting minutes. It just all won't be on the tape.
Okay, we could do that, but we wouldn't be in an actual meeting afterwards so that we couldn't have any motions or any action on anything that we may have decided in that executive session. That would have to wait until the next meeting. As I understand it.
No, so wait, so I, just so I understand it. So Julie, you're saying what? You stop recording?
I can either stop the meeting at that point or I can, I can actually stop recording, turn off the screen. I can even turn off the screen and just go on my honor system with no sound and you can just text me. Let me know when you're back up and running and we can turn everything back on and I'll turn back on the sound and it's great. So it's up to you how you want to do it. If you want to keep it recording.
No, I'm, so I, that's, I'm just trying to understand it. You can stop recording.
I can stop recording.
They would vote to go an executive session and then you would stop the recording. People would leave and then and you all would still be on the screen and you could have your conversation. And then you'd call Julie and say what time you came out of executive session, if there were any motions and
Well, there can't be any motions in executive session.
No, you come out of executive session and if you have any motions, they are in public and you could call Julie and tell her. It can work if you stop recording. That's all I'm saying. What you know you could do and still have the people on once you started recording.
I think you agree in executive session on the substance of what you're going to do and then you come out of executive session.
You have to vote in public.
Right, you have to vote in public.
Yeah.
But without that being recorded, okay, Julie could start recording it again. And we end the meeting after that vote. Is that correct?
Yes, we could.
Okay.
Or you could just call her and tell her what it, what it is.
I'm sorry to look everything up, but I just don't think with COVID that we should let these things go. So we can, that we get together again.
Well, um, I mean, if I could say something, so the selectmen are working on the budget still. Kim is working, Kim Barron is working on the revenue side of it. We are going to meet one more time. And then the budget is going to be finalized and I'm hoping to give it to the Board of Finance next week. And at that time, so at that time, you can talk about the budget and the salaries or whatever is in there.
Well, then maybe we should defer it until we have our next meeting. And is it possible, just throwing this out there, to just have an executive session meeting for discussion purposes and then any motions that might come out of that, we have at the next open meeting?
No, you would, when you come out of executive session, if you have any motions, they need to be made and
Properly.
No, they need to be made in public.
Do that because the selectman just did that, but we met.
Um, Andy, are there specific reasons why we can and cannot go into executive session?
Absolutely. I mean, you can only go into executive session to cover personnel matters and
Negotiations.
Negotiations and
Real estate.
Ending legal matters, real estate.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like four, I don't think there are five, right? I think there's only those four.
Again, I don't want to pay attention to anything and I'd be willing to meet in person socially distanced and wear a mask if y'all want to get together.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem doing that.
I don't either. I mean, I've got my first shot.
Me too.
Maybe we should consider that, you all.
What's the general consensus on that? I mean, Nanette, if you wanted to join by phone, we could do that.
I mean,
I'm in.
Physically, there's no reason why I can't, I couldn't get there, but I, I, I'm not sure that I'm ready to do an in-person meeting.
Okay. I'm not either.
I'm good either way.
Well, we could do a socially distant meeting and those who are not comfortable participating in person could participate on a conference call. We've done that before.
Yeah.
I think that eases the dilemma of going into executive session.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. So I think we should just move on then.
Yep, okay, I'm good with that. All right, then the next item on the agenda is the Fire Department.
Well, I think you have an open motion.
Oh, we do. Um, do we want to vote on that motion?
Or just pull it?
Well, we would need the second.
Did you get a second on that?
We did.
There's no second.
There is no second, so just
There was no second?
Resent it.
Then you can, yeah, withdraw your motion if you'd like, Paul.
I withdraw, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Rogers' rules of order have been observed. Very good. So the next item is the Fire Department Budget. Sarah Laureate, welcome. I'm glad you're here.
Hey there, I'm actually here with Todd Wheeler, the chief also, so I'm going to give him the floor.
Hi Todd, how are you?
Good. How is everybody doing?
Welcome.
Good, thanks. So go ahead.
Okay, Fire Department Budget. This year we put in asking for sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for a yearly budget and that we dropped down from eighteen to nineteen, used to be sixty-eight, six fifty. And we're doing pretty well ourselves and on top of things. So we dropped it down last year and we're leaving it the same as this.
Is there any motion on the idea of a new truck?
I'm getting to that next. So the truck line, the two trucks that we have, the Rescue Nine replacement, this year we requested forty-six thousand, five twenty. And for Engine Ten replacement, we requested fifty-two thousand. Still with the idea of keep the two lines separate just in case. But if we combine the project and build one truck out of the two in the year 2024, delivery of 2025, we'd have enough money for that. So that's what we requested this year with the two trucks.
Okay.
And will be on target. If that money goes in this year, we'll be on target for that project when it does come time.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions? I'm sorry, Todd, I don't mean to step on you there. Have you got more?
Go ahead, that's fine. If you want to ask questions throughout, no problem.
It's hard not seeing your face, you know, we're just not sure. Did anyone have any questions for Todd while we go along? Feel free to speak up. Okay, go ahead. I'll, I'll stop talking until you finish this time, Todd.
No, that's fine. You can trust me, jump in whenever if you have any questions. I don't want to miss anything either, so. Different projects that we kind of, with our own finance committee in the Fire Department and projected costs and we're doing a really good job projecting things out so that we don't have to come and put line items in the budget and ask the town for more money. The roof we did on the main firehouse was forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars when we were done. And that was, we paid for it out of our own pocket because we put it away for a while. So we didn't have to come to the town for that. And this past year here, we paid for the roof on the old firehouse because that was seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that we spent out of our own money and we projected and saved for. Any questions on those two or keep going here?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. We also looked into replacing our Jaws of Life and Rescue Tools for extrication, car accidents, what have you. The total price on that whole package was fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. So we budgeted for that. It made that happen this year. We're taking delivery of the tools probably within a month and a little bit of training on them. And they'll be in service and ready to go. They are no exaggeration, probably about four to five times faster than the current tools that we have. And they're a little bit lighter and they're also not hooked to a truck or a power unit with a cord. They're battery operated. So we can go wherever in the woods as far as we need to go. Whatever environment we get into, we can handle that and also checked with mutual aid towns around. Southbury has them. And Millford has them. I know Washington's looking into them. Woodbury is also looking into them. So they will work and integrate with those mutual aid towns. And it would be the same tools that they would be getting. So once again, if we have a bad wreck on sixty-seven down by Southbury or something, if Southbury guys got there, they'd know exactly what they're doing with ours. We'd work with them. This past year, they came to a crash that we had down there with their new tools, exactly what we're budgeting for and getting here. And it was like light and day compared to what we, or night and day compared to what we have now. We were already looking into them and comparing them, talked to them, talked to Millford, did a training exercise with the factory that came out with all the tools and showed us how to latest and greatest of their product. So we're moving forward with that. Like I said, within a month here, they should be on the truck and ready to go. So.
Excellent.
Other projects too lately. With everything that's happened, I'm sure everybody here has heard with the current situation at the firehouse. Few things went on there. While the trucks are out and we are getting the work rebuilt on the firehouse and back into standards where we can move back in since the call there. We have looked at painting the truck bays. That is around ten thousand dollars. It hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-two. It's something that we've projected doing now since we're kind of out of the building for another week or so. We've taken that on. They're going, the truck bays are going to be painted and done. The department's picking up the tab for that. Also, the floor in the truck bays where the old drain was, it was steel, steel drain in the concrete, the steel started rotting off basically from the salt coming back in from the trucks being out on the roads. We have been planning for this project for about seven years. Once again, we had a quick meeting, stepped up to the plate while we're out. Currently, we're taking the drains out of the building. I've been in touch with the building inspector on both projects and we're redoing the drains and that price that we're picking up is, will be around eleven thousand dollars. A lot of the members are doing the work also to help with the cost. So that's something we're picked, we picked up with our own money instead of coming to the town also. There's a couple of trees outside the firehouse in the corner that are going to, they're dying, one's an ash tree. There's two others that are bad. Started dropping some limbs out by the parking area where we all park when we go to a call. So that's going to be about another six or seven thousand dollar bill that we're taking care of and we're doing there also. So we're doing pretty well, our finance committee and projecting out so we don't have to come to the town or increase our budget. That's, I have the tax return here prepared also. I'll hand a copy into the town hall for you with that. If you'd like to review that, because I know we hand it in every single year and we come see you. So. Any questions on everything? That's pretty much what I have to present for tonight.
That's fantastic. Todd, great job, great job.
Yeah, above and beyond.
Especially with everything that's happened in the past two weeks, everybody's really stepped up to the plate, come together and we're tackling it. So one of the other things too is I'll just let you guys know as the board that with the insurance adjusters and everything that we've had, there's basically about seems like four to five adjusters for whatever situations in the firehouse or equipment or trucks or the equipment on or the building or the contents. They needed a complete inventory of everything in that firehouse, right down to the last spoon, fork, cup, piece of paper, folder, everything that was in there. And with the insurance claim of everything that would be on the claim and wouldn't be on the claim. We're talking with the adjusters for doing this. They would, they would come in and do an inventory for us. But they also charged to do the inventory. So Sarah Laureate and myself talked about it. Kenny Murphy, couple others, Mark Maynard, Billy Hibbard, and we sat down and we talked about it, figured it out. We were gonna, by the time they did the inventory, it was going to take a substantial amount of money out of the claim of what we were getting back to be reimbursed for everything on the fire side, Fire Department side and the ambulance side. So we sat down, kind of had our own little meeting in the bays that we're working, the truck bays, we're working out of a makeshift office there right now. While the trucks are out. We decided to take it on ourselves and save that money and get it back into both organizations where it should go. So there has been about five of us that have really stepped up and we did a complete inventory, right down to every single, like I said, coffee cup, piece of paper, folder, everything that's in that building. And it's being submitted to the adjusters now. I think by the end of the week here, they'll both, they'll have the copies and they'll be going, which saved both departments quite a bit of money on an insurance claim. Got it back, so we should be able to get back everything that we lost or was damaged.
Todd, thank you and Sarah and everyone else who was involved in that for all of your hard work. The town greatly appreciates it. I don't know where we would be without people like you who are willing to step up.
No, I can tell you that. They have worked long hours picking up all the slack just from the, the moment that got the call about, you know, that there was smoke in the building. And just the fast response that went out. After, I guess the day after I had put out a call just to let people know what was going on and to publicly thank both times. Because they really have gone they have met all of the adjusters, they have met JP McGuire, who's ripping the place apart and going to be putting it back together and, you know, just staying on top of everything. They really have been a tremendous asset to have them there. And like he said, what they're saving, doing the inventory is really amazing. I was surprised that you wanted to do that, but it, that's not an easy thing to do.
Well, thank you very much for your support and we appreciate it.
Are there any questions for Todd or Sarah?
No, the and the selectman didn't change any of your budget, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for spending some time with us tonight. Again, we appreciate all the work you do and particularly the time that you put into creating the budget for us to look at.
But you know, and also, you know, they didn't skip a beat with response to any emergency call in the town. They worked together, we, with Public Works to get all of the equipment trucks out of the bays so that they could do all this other extra work that they want. And, and then I even texted Todd the other day. I mean, there he is on the, on the news. It's like, is that you? I heard the mutual aid call to Southbury. They had a huge brush fire. And so he was there and I, like, I don't know where he's getting his energy, but there he was on the TV. So really, they just done an incredible job.
Thank you. I will say, you know, with everything going on, everybody stepped up, everybody came really helped out. Mutual aid towns around were right on the phone, right, offering all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, Bridgewater also had us covered for any calls. Woodbury and Southbury, like they split it up. They took a few days here. They automatically played. I mean, it really worked out as best it could with the bad situation that we had.
I did send a thank you note to all the first selectmen of all the towns that responded. And asked them to tell their departments of our appreciation.
Not only do we live in a great town, we have good neighbors too.
Absolutely.
Indeed. So that's my budget present and if that's, I'll drop the copy of the tax return off. So if anybody wants to review it, they can. And just to let you know, I mean, that's what our finance committee there, we're working pretty hard to try and stay out of the, asking the town for more money and keep, keep going on our own. So that's kind of our goal and projecting out. We're projecting things out six, seven years, eight years. So.
Can I ask a question? Do you know when you're going to start with the capital campaign to add on to the firehouse? I know that's
That's really, I guess my hat to wear with that. We keep hitting some roadblocks. First it was COVID and we had some really good momentum going this, the ambulance had some good momentum going this spring and now I've been a little sidetracked with this. We're we're hoping to pick up next week on the twenty-second, we have another meeting. So we're, we're working on it. We're working on it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I was just curious if you had any other timeline in your head. Obviously you've up to your eyeballs with all of this.
And there's another factor too is, is the Fire Department side of that, we've already been projecting costs and stuff of helping out and, and with expenses of doing an addition on the firehouse and especially like all the pavement needs to be replaced. We're looking at doing that after the addition gets put on. And we already setting money aside ourselves to do that. So we don't have to make a line item for that with the town.
Yeah. Well, if you are allowed to have the picking and fiddling, is that something that you think you want to pursue this year?
We're gonna see what the state has to say and we're gonna hold off a little bit and see what we're gonna do with that. We're waiting and we, the committee, three of us on the committee probably talk every single week about what we're going to do with that and kind of just going along with the flow a little bit. So.
I know, it's all you can do. It's just a lot of work to do in a month if you were gonna, if you were gonna do it.
After this job at the firehouse, that might seem kind of easy.
Yeah, at least that's all that. Is there anything else for Todd or Sarah? Or can we let them go?
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
You too. Okay, tax collections. Kim, you're up.
So I didn't bring the report home with me that I sent to you, so you might have to help me out. They're down a little bit from previous years. What was it? Do you remember, do you have the percentage in front of you?
I don't. I would, it was five or six percent.
We're down almost ten percent of what we usually collect by the second installment, dead light line date. And I was going over it on Fri- Thursday or Friday and a lot of the outstanding collections are from very big real estate, you know, fifteen thousand installments, twelve thousand for one installment. So I, I really think people held off paying to invest their money, which the town probably could have benefited from investing it too. So originally, I know Barbara sent the email out for me that said that we're deferring it for COVID purpose, for people who were affected by COVID by twenty percent of their, you know, normal pay and that if you could afford to pay it on time, you know, it would be good because the town has their, you know, they have bills that they have to pay. But a lot of the people that did not pay were the big, the big payers. So my suggestion is if the governor comes up with the deferment again for July, I would just say that we should do it by application. I didn't do it by application before because I thought I would get a lot of them and I didn't think I was able to decide who qualified for it. But then I talked to Washington and they only got six people that you know, applied for it. So I think I would do by application for, for next year. So we, we have about I think it was seven hundred and seven thousand dollars still outstanding as of today. Which is, it is pretty hefty for this time of the year for March.
Kim, the percentages were ninety-one point five is in and ninety-eight is the number we usually get.
Right, by now. So we're, it's about ten percent we're down, which is, it's pretty big. It's about seven, about seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, the report shows seven oh one as of the eleventh.
So
I mean, that's my, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's my, that's what I'm saying for, for going forward next year. I mean, we won't know anything until after April 1st. You know, and I know the first installment, a lot of people forgot to pay because they, you know, they had four extra months, three extra months. They were shocked when they got a delinquent bill with a 6% interest. So I don't think it worked out the way we thought it would, but I think Roxbury was good by offering the deferment. But my suggestion is not to offer in July if they, if they, if the state of Connecticut says it's okay to do that.
How long can they stretch out their delinquency, if you will?
Well, in May, I lean everything. It gets leaned and after it's delinquent for the second full year, I start a tax sale. And usually when I start, like the first legal notice that goes in the paper, they usually come up with the money. So I don't let it get past two years.
Kim, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but looking at the list, is there a significant amount that you think are not gonna pay or they're just gonna pay right at the deadline?
There's a big majority then that will pay the last day, the very last day. And then there's the same old ones every year that go to, you know, push it as far as they can.
All right, Kim, have you got anything else for us? Or are there any questions from the board for Kim?
I would just say, hi, Kim. It's Paul Healy. I would say instead of having to go through some, you know, complicated application processes, just come up with a sworn affidavit that people have to sign if they wish to defer. Then you aren't really left with making judgments.
Right. That's what I like. If, if, if he extends it, he may not this year, the governor.
He may not. You're right.
Anyway, so hopefully they get better by April 2nd.
Okay, fingers crossed.
Indeed. Couple of weeks, we'll know. Okay, well, if no one else has anything for Kim, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay, so there's rumor of a town meeting. Barbara, do you want to take us through this?
I sent you the, the what? The warning. And it's basically something that really needed to be taken care of for the plan of conservation and development. And the planning commission already went back and approved this. But because it is involving open space preservation, the entire, the legislative body needs to approve it also. And it's a, it's gonna be a resolution ratifying the planning commission's recommendation to amend the 2020 plan of conservation and development for open space preservation, going back to October 31, 2020 grand list. So that was, that was overlooked in the plan. And the planning commission under statute approves their own plan of conservation and development. But when you have a change like this, it does have to go to a town meeting. And then also we are looking to amend the ordinances to provide for appointment rather than election of regular and alternate planning commission members. And I, I'm gonna get the resolutions and what they say out tomorrow beforehand and get them online. There was a discussion, how this came about was to try and combine the planning and zoning commissions and combine the in the wetlands and conservation commissions, which is how it is in a lot of towns. And so I met with all of the chairman and the planning chairman was in favor of it in the beginning and then changed his mind. And as we talked, it just said, you know what, we're gonna keep it as is. So, but I brought up the fact that the planning commission is the only land use commission that's elected. And so, you know, in talking with the town clerk, it would be a lot easier, you know, if they were appointed just as all of the others. So we're, the planning members, so far none of them have objected to it. They will not lose their terms. We are gonna change the terms a little bit so that they are all, instead of being appointed in November when they are elected, they would be appointed in January and then their terms run four years. They're staggered. Everything's gonna stay the same. They will stay until their, to the year that their current term ends and then they will turn to be appointed. So that's up for vote because it's a change of an ordinance. And then we, we have to go to town meeting to approve your recommendation, the board of finance, to transfer 30,000 from the reserve for capital undesignated. And that was for the local capital improvement plan to purchase the permitting software for all of land use. You approved that at like your last meeting. And then we have to add this new project that we got the steep grant for. We don't have the money yet, but we're supposed to be getting it for the security and technology upgrades. And that we're adding to this present year. Because, and so we have to budget that. You have to make an additional appropriation, but the steep grant is gonna pay for it. It's a wash, but it's administration that we need. So that's our big meeting. And that's gonna be by Zoom. And I'm sure all the planning commission members are gonna be there and I hope that there's not more than 100 people. We'll see. We'll see.
Guess 20.
So that's, that's our town meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Barbara on that? Selectmen's report.
Well, I, I sent you some information before this meeting and one of them was a memo from Kim Barron. We were in here yesterday working and thank God Kim came in because you will see that the town's payroll was returned, was bounced for insufficient funds. And no one called. Kim, you're on. Kim Barron?
Kim, you're muted.
Thought you would wanna say that.
Hello.
Hello.
So I sent you a copy of the, we were in here and couldn't believe it because the ripple effect of that would have been, would not have been good. So Kim jumped on it, got ahold of Union Savings Bank. And Kim, you can tell them what happened.
So, yeah. So basically what happened is we have our payroll processed every other week, the bi-weekly payroll. And hold on just a sec. I'm trying to bring this up. So, so last week was the payroll week. Our payroll is pretty much automated. We have transfers that go into cover it. The payroll company goes into Rabbit and, you know, once we submit our hours and such. And, and apparently, well, exactly, the Union Savings returned our payroll to our payroll vendor. Returned the ACH that they sent us to pay for the payroll, claiming there were non-sufficient funds to pay for it. So I can tell you in the 20 years that I've been serving as the treasurer of this town, we've never had any transaction drawn against our accounts and any financial institution returned to a vendor for non-sufficient funds. And this is a $45,000 ACH transaction. So what happened was in calling, in talking to both management at Paychex and Union Savings Bank, it was explained to me that there was a lapse in the operational controls. And that's what it was said, how it was said to me, which causes error to occur at Union Savings Bank. This was an error on their part. I, now unfortunately for Union Savings Bank, no one was aware that this had happened until I was notified by Paychex that the ACH had been returned. I did not hear from anyone from Union Savings Bank and so I was livid, livid, to put it mildly, that this had all happened. Let me just read you a part, portion of the memo that I, I sent to Barbara and I think she's gonna forward it to you.
I did send it.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. So, so they bounced our payroll. And there's really no excuse. They're, they're supposed to have these controls in place to, to ensure that this kind of stuff never happens. And somebody I, for lack of a better phrase, was asleep at the switch over at Union Savings in the operations end of it. And allowed this, allowed this phenomenon to occur. So needless to say, when I saw that I had received an email from Paychex saying that our payroll had been returned for non-sufficient funds, I was, I thought maybe it was a fraudulent email, to be honest with you. But I called Paychex right away, spoke to the supervisor that I deal with there. And she did confirm that the bank had returned it for non-sufficient funds. And so what that, what that triggers on Paychex's end is they put us on a bounced payroll list. They flag our account and our account has, is now in suspension for the next five business days. So if we, we don't process the payroll every week, which is good for us, but if we had, we wouldn't be able to process our payroll, if that was the case.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. So while, and, and these flags they have put on our account there are, are system flags. And, and Paychex is a big company. Once these flags are in place, they're, they're very hard to get rid of. And they're very sympathetic to what has all happened here. They, they know how upset I was. They were very, very nice to deal with. But it is an error, all the same, beyond our control and they have to abide by their rules. So, so, so at this point, I have not heard, you know, one or two business days had gone by and I'd not heard anything from Union Savings. And they were not aware of what had happened until I called over there and I took them to task. Apparently, imagine. They were very apologetic. They're very sorry for all of this happening. And they did offer to send a letter to Paychex on our behalf explaining that this was their error. And I will certainly take them up on them. But I am just furious and livid that, that a $3 billion bank like Union Savings let this happen. I, I just don't know. I just don't know how it happened.
This is Paul. May I just quickly ask, were there, have you had any fees or penalties or any costs beyond your rage and fury, which I think we all share? And that has to be covered by Union Savings if you haven't heard any of that. Is Paychex giving you any penalty?
For a while, but, yeah. Kim, it's John Hopkins. Did you check the balances? Do we have all the money in the account we're supposed to have in the account?
Yeah, yeah.
So none of it went anywhere else?
No, 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 no. I was really, really, no, no, that is the definite, no. As I said, go ahead.
You want to get a letter from them to the board, to the board of selectmen indicating that this was their fault, not just the Paychex to you, because you're gonna need it for the order here.
Yeah.
Very good point, John. Really good.
And you should talk to the bank regulator of the state of Connecticut, because this is outrageous.
Oh, I, I mean, my head, I, my, if, if my head could explode, it did yesterday. This is very, a very bad thing to happen.
Don't they run, don't they have a number of our investments under management?
Yeah, they do. They do. Not all, but we are definitely gonna be reviewing or evaluating our banking relationship. I told them flat out. I said, this is why people leave banks. You know, I, 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 I can't even comprehend how this could ever have happened. And the other, you know, the, the ramifications of this are totally unprecedented. I said, but this is our payroll and, and if we didn't, weren't aware of this or I hadn't come in Monday, they, they kind of led me to believe that Paychex that, that while they would have given us time to correct this NSF or this ACH thing, but they would have, most businesses started, started pulling people's pays back out of their pay, back out of their accounts. And that was, and that would have been just horrible, horrible. So, so while they're all very sorry over there, they, they don't really know what else they can do to help us other than send a letter to Paychex. So I really need to.
Kim, who else at the bank, I, I understand you've talked to the branch, but who, who else at the bank have you spoken with?
Oh, I've spoken to our account. We have no, they have a, another department that handles the municipalities government and Treasury Services and the woman who's in charge of that division, I spoke to her yesterday as well. Well, she listened to me rant and rave on the phone. She just listened. She didn't have a lot to say. I think she's pretty stupefied herself how this all happened. So, so my, my concern here is, you know, do they have, do they value us enough to ensure that all the proper controls are in place at all times? They are required to have appropriate technology systems to protect our, our money from fraudulent activity and errors like these from occurring. So so I have to, I have some work to do on this. Everything has been brought back. Our, our payroll has been paid for. And I did, I'm looking at some other options, including having the payroll be a zero balance account. So whenever there's anything that hits it, it automatically gets a transfer from the general fund. But having that, it's, it's really mind boggling that this happened. And I don't really think they know what to say, to be honest with you, why it happened or whatever. But they are gonna hear from Barbara and I on this issue. And, and we'll keep you posted. But I have to totally revalue, reevaluate this banking relationship. It's, it's really a shame because they're very convenient. They're right across the street. And most of the time they take pretty good care of us. But, but this was not good. Not good.
You deserve an explanation and a detailed explanation as to precisely what happened.
Yes, no.
Shot the sheriff.
I, I, I totally agree with you, John. And they are gonna have to make some amends here. And yes, send a letter to the board of selectmen and send a letter to Paychex for sure.
Kim, I don't want you to lose track of John's suggestion about being in contact with the banking regulators. Cause I think it's a really good.
I know. I, I, I hadn't, that had, that thought was probably gonna come up in my mind at some point, but, but it hadn't yet. Cause I still, I, as you can understand, I've got a lot going on right now. And so, so this was just one more thing that really didn't need to happen. But, but I wanted to make you aware of it. I wrote this narrative to Barbara. Barbara, where? to Barbara, Barbara was here, uh, while this was all happening, and I kept her abreast of it, as it, as it was going on, so. Anyway.
But she jumped right on it, and, uh, it just happened to be in, which was...
Yeah, thank God.
Fortunate.
Just, for a little bit, because she was going elsewhere to volunteer and, yeah, I can't even imagine where my checks went, but...
Yeah, I'm still kind of in shock that this all happened, so I gotta have, I just kind of have to decompress for a couple of days, but I did want to, uh, I did want to get this out to all of you, because I thought you absolutely should be aware of it.
Yeah, Kim, thank you so much for being on top of this.
Yeah, yeah, talk about losing sleep.
Hmm, you shouldn't be losing sleep, that's their problem.
Yeah.
They should be losing sleep, exactly.
Right.
No, I know, but it, but it's all, it's all the other things that could have happened, the snowball if that's something like this, I was like, oh my...
Good catch.
So, very, very unfortunate.
Okay, um, Barbara, what else? What else is going on?
So, um, in this budget, uh, that we're in at the moment, we, um, the uncollected amount of revenue is about, it's seven and a half percent, it's $850,000 still that's due to come in, but, uh, we're not thinking that it won't come in, and, um, the money that we have spent, we spent 70% of our budget, so, uh, we're doing, we're where we should be actually, and we're watching everything as we always do. Um, we have our bid opening for, um, oops, here we go, hello? I, it was Kim, so I was answering, I'm sorry. Um, we have our bid opening for Davenport tomorrow, there's 14 companies that have taken the bid documents, and, uh, but the, I, I cannot get the state to answer why they have not awarded the local bridge money. So we're going to have to see where we are, and, uh, I'd hate to miss this season, and I'd hate to lose a good bid if something is there tomorrow, but we cannot start spending any money, or if, when we do get awarded, uh, we can't use it, it's crazy, but, so I, I, I've been after the state, I don't know what else to do about it, um, except keep bugging them, when are they going to award this money? They, they, they need to do it, and, because it's been since October, September, October. Um, uh, let's see, HRRA, uh, I really have wanted to try and get us moving from MIRA with our trash, uh, to HRRA, um, I think that I told you that we were let go, we were allowed to leave as of July 1, and we have been accepted in HRRA, and now, um, just looking at, um, the, uh, the contracts, I get that, so I hope to have another special town meeting. Hope, uh, they must, oh, they must, oh, I couldn't understand that. See, all the emergency vehicles are down back, I don't know, somebody closed the gate. So, um, anyway, that, 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 we're going to try and get that settled. Uh, one of the things that the selectmen are going to start talking about is, you know, maybe opening, when to open town hall, senior center, they're asking, and I really don't know just yet what we're going to be, what we're going to do. Um, we are, like I said, almost finished with the budget, I know that you have that on your, uh, as a, an item here for when you will get the budget, and, uh, things are just a little bit behind, and, but not, it's not anything that I'm concerned about, Kim has been up to her eyeballs with the FEMA, uh, I can't, I can't tell you the, the meetings and the Zoom meetings that she's been on and the back and forth, and then just, COVID has just affected everything and how things are flowing, so, but we're, we're not, we're not far from being to where we're going to be in front of you, I want you to know that. Yes, you're going to have to have a special meeting, at least, the, uh, your, your budget, um, uh, hearing, it's the 26th of April, and, uh, but, and I don't know how you're going to want to handle those budget meetings, if you're going to want to come in, or are you going to have them in Zoom, or both, whatever.
We have them by Zoom for the most part.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, um, so we are, I mean, one of the things that you're going to see in the budget is, uh, Region 12, and we've got a pretty steep increase on the last year, we had 17 kids in Booth, the last count I knew, so it's a 9.2%, 2.6% increase of, of the school, that's 651,000, but we will be getting about 350,000 back from tuition, thank God, but, uh, we're just going to fine tune all the revenue numbers, uh, before we finalize this budget. So the, the process is, is that the selectmen will vote to approve the budget and move it to the Board of Finance.
When do you think that will happen, Barbara, just, uh...
Um, well, I was just talking with Kim, and, uh, like you said, she's, keeps getting sidetracked, but hopefully by, by next week, you'll have it.
Okay.
So we should perhaps consider having a special meeting, I'm, I'm jumping the gun here, but we'll get to that when we get to, uh...
I mean, the first week of April, you could do that. And, um, the other thing that it's going on, you know, the, uh, following things in the legislature, uh, big public hearings, but the statewide property tax, it's, you know, it's a mill tax on top of your property tax, it's going to be mailed to the state, came out vehemently opposed to it, um, along with many other people, and it's for any people whose homes are valued at $300,000 or less, anything over $300,000, it's going to be...
Yeah.
And so from Roxbury, they figured that, uh, over, over $300,000 will be sent in to the state, um, it's not anything that'll come back to this town, and, uh, I don't know what they're planning on doing with it. So, uh, we are getting money from the American, the relief, uh, bill that came out, and, uh, but they are still deciding on what you can use it for, like we wouldn't be able to buy down the budget, and then they, um, they're going to give it to us over two years, I'm just trying to keep you in the loop on it, but things change rapidly.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's about it.
Are there any questions for Barbara?
I have one question, uh, Barbara, in, in the email you sent out, there was money that was coming directly to the town and money that was allocated to Litchfield County, were they different?
Yes, well, that will be on top of what the town is getting, and as I understand it, that that money, uh, I can't remember the number, is going to be spread out based on per capita, so it's not going to be a big ticket number for us.
Yeah, it was 30, it was 35 million for Litchfield County, according to your memo.
And so if they divide that by per capita, uh, you know, I, I haven't gotten those numbers yet, because I don't know everybody's town, but, but we'll get that number, we'll get all of that from CCM, because they said they're, they're going to get that to us soon, and I'll forward it to you, so that you know.
Yeah.
At the firehouse, a lot worse, I got the call from the alarm company, and it was about smoke on the second floor, said you got to tone out the fire department, like I said, Todd was there within eight minutes, and, uh, but there was also another fire that was set as a distraction, and, uh, thank God, he saw what was going on in the firehouse, and he called Bridgewater to get that, go to the other one.
How badly damaged...
But if they didn't put, if they didn't have something on the second floor, the target was the ambulance, and that, what, that had, that had issues, there was fire there in the ambulance bay.
How badly damaged was the ambulance?
For a while, and could have set up the whole building, but the smoke is what got it, the alarm.
Yeah. Barbara, how badly damaged was the ambulance?
Um, you know what, they sent, um, what I didn't, what I didn't know at the time was that, uh, Sarah, what's Sarah, is she still on?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Why don't you tell them, because I, I didn't realize that the old ambulance was in the bay.
Yes, our, uh, our second ambulance was in the bay and our, um, the older one, and it suffered significant, uh, heat and smoke damage, and unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you, because I've been going back and forth with, uh, the adjuster and the body shop, because they have to take the, uh, the box apart to look at the wiring harnesses, uh, based on where the fire was. So I don't have an answer for you yet, but we're fully insured, so we're, we're hopeful either way.
But you did lose some serious equipment that you took out of the ambulance one, because that was going in for service, and, uh, you know, hopefully the insurance is going to take care of everything, but, yeah, it's just one thing after another, and like I said, Todd and Sarah has done outstanding job dealing with all of it, so...
It's great.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, anything else for Barbara? And I think the next item is a discussion of, uh, first, uh, selectmen salaries. Um, I would suggest that anyone who might be considering running for that office in November, um, recuse themselves from that, this discussion, uh, or motions. But otherwise, uh, let's go ahead. Um, Nanette, it's your motion, uh, what do you want to say?
So, my understanding is, well, I read the minutes, so it's not, it's, the Board of Selectmen reduced the, um, salary for the incoming first selectmen to $65,000, um, which is an $18,000 reduction, so it happened in executive session, which means that we don't know the rationale of this, for this, of the selectmen, so that's, that's problem one. Problem two is, um, it comes just as we're about to elect a, um... Due to the level of interest or the capacity of some, of specific candidates either on either party, uh, to run, um, I think this is going to, um, take, bring up, uh, a lot of interest in, um, within the town, I've already been asked questions, um, so I thought that since we don't have the budget yet, I understand it is a budget item that we will get to take a crack at, but, um, I think it's hard, um, I, I think we won't benefit from the thinking of the selectmen, which means we'll just, I guess, have to do it on our own, but, um, so, given the fact that we're not at the budget yet, I just, I thought it was an important enough issue, um, particularly given what's coming up in the fall, that we might want to start to discuss it.
I can give you my history if you'd like, just, or, or not.
That would be great, Barbara, please.
All right, so, first of all, we went into executive session for personnel and salaries, and, um, should, this should not have been discussed in executive session, because back in 2017, April, April 3rd meeting of the Board of Selectmen, um, Russ Dorenzo, and it's in the minutes, and it was in a public hearing, a public meeting, uh, Russ Dorenzo noted that now it was a good time to ask the Board of Finance to set the selectmen's starting salaries for any newly elected selectmen, and that was, you know, after an election, and, um, the selectmen, uh, need, I'm going to read you the minutes, the Board of Selectmen needs to send the Board of Finance a request to do this, based on his research of salaries for other selectmen in the area of smaller sized towns, newly elected first selectmen should be in the range of 50,000 to 60,000 per year, and selectmen should start at 5,000 to 6,000 a year. After a board has these years of experience such as ours, a new person coming into either position should earn the present salary, not step into it. Motion by Russ Dorenzo to send to the Board of Finance a recommendation to a newly elected first selectman's starting salary at 60,000, and any newly elected selectman's salary starting at 6. The motion was seconded by James Conway, and it carried unanimously. On April 18th, um, the selectmen's salaries was discussed at the Board of Finance meeting, and the Board of Selectmen's recommendation regarding a newly elected selectman's starting salaries, Barbara Henry explained that during the selectmen's meeting, Russ Dorenzo suggested, and the selectmen agreed, that the Board of Finance set the salaries of newly elected selectmen. The Board of Finance agreed to consider this and all salaries after that present budget was complete. So, people change, years go on, and, um, the Board of Finance never brought it up, and terms were four years, somehow it's still sitting here, so, um, Russ brought it up again, and, uh, said that we, we should ratify that and put it into this budget, now, I got it up to 65, and, um, and so, anyway, that is what is going to be in the budget, and that is going to be a recommendation of the selectmen, it is for the reasons that he stated, but it, it will then go to, um, approval of the legislative body after the budget authority, which is the budget, which is the Board of Finance. So when you get that budget from us, you can certainly discuss that, I think it's, well, I, I'm not going to tell you it's premature right now, but, because you're welcome to discuss whatever, but to make that change, you don't even have the budget in front of you to do that, but you can do it at that meeting when we do present you the budget.
Right, once we have the budget, we can make the change if we want to.
Right.
Yeah, well, this, this dovetails into some of the things I wanted to discuss, so thank you, Nanette, for raising that. I'm just a little confused about process here, in terms of, well, if we're the Board of Finance, it seems to me we would have a hell of a lot to say on these, these issues, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Before we, before we start this discussion, I'm just going to recuse myself, I think we all know, I just wanted on a record.
Thanks, Patrick.
See you soon.
I should say that I had considered it myself, um, but even at the higher salary, um, I can't do it, so I am not going to recuse myself.
And I'm not running, I was just kind of joking with y'all. I couldn't manage from France, wouldn't work, if we ever get there.
You'd be six hours early for every conversation, you know?
I know. I said it'd be 1:00 AM.
What was the year again that these discussions happened?
2017.
2017.
Seems like yesterday.
Yeah.
So...
Oh, it was never brought up by the Board of Finance to even, uh, talk about that, you know, maybe the salary should be set back or whatever, and, uh, like I said, people change, years go on, and, um, there was a, it was a four-year term that I was in, so...
Yeah, we've also had a lot of distractions between then and now, not the least of which was COVID, and we've had storms and all the rest, but I must say, as a business person, um, I've never heard of this kind of thinking, just saying.
I don't see any other political offices at, say, the state or federal level, um, I don't see there's salaries being determined by experience, uh, the salary is set, the president makes what he makes, the legislature makes what they make, um, it's all set by statute, and it's not dependent on anything other than being elected to that office.
Yeah.
I think that's how this should be set as well.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, as, as we all know, it's, it's a, it's a 24/7 job, it's a salary job, and, you know, if we want quality folk... It's a salary job and, you know, if we want quality folks to consider it, you know, I just think this is a very important discussion to have.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, I do, I mean, Russ did do his legwork, he and I have had a conversation about that. Or, uh, it wasn't so much a conversation as me listening to him. But uh, he, he was rather opinionated. And uh, you know, Roxbury First Selectman is, I believe, the highest first selectman in the Northwest Corner. But I also think that if we wanna get someone of Barbara's caliber, who puts in the hours, the effort, um, the heart that she does, we need to be willing to reward them accordingly.
Right. Couldn't agree more.
Well, it, it, it has to be a salary that, well, it, a, a salary that, not only that makes sense and in, I, I agree, we need to look at other, um, salaries in other towns, but I also think we need to look at what. Never mind.
A lot of other towns, for example, have a full-time road supervisor, um, which we do not. For example, Washington has a full-time guy who I think makes.
A lot of first selectmen have a car, um, uh, full-time road supervisor. Uh.
So yeah, there are, it depends on the town, the duties vary from town to town.
Well, would this put any other employees above your salary? I think it would.
But when I started, yes, absolutely.
No, I'm not talking about now. So other people would make more than the sixty-five.
Uh, yep.
Yes. I think that's another thing to take into consideration.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Well, what happens if, if the town decides to hi- hire a town super for the public works? Is that something that's being considered?
I've asked for it for twenty years. Um, I remember bringing it up, uh, one year and uh, I can't remember who, but said, well, you make almost as much as the first selectmen in Washington and they have, uh, more people, you know, they have fifteen hundred more people than we do. And I said, yeah, and they also have an eighty-five thousand dollar road supervisor. And so, uh, I'm just giving you information. I've asked for a road supervisor for a long time. I do all the paperwork, all the bids, everything for the, for the public works.
I remember in the past couple of years that you've, you've brought it up to us that the Board of, uh, Selectmen has taken it out of the budget before, before it came to us. I know you, I know you've mentioned it several years.
I'm just mentioning this in case, um, if, if we end up, if the town ends up hiring somebody for, say, eighty thousand dollars to run the public works, I know that takes a big chunk of Barbara's time. Um, you know, we really should think about the first selectmen's salary then, if, if that's being considered.
That's a valid point, I think. But I don't think that, um, my sense is that's a non-starter with the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, it seems to be that way.
Well, except.
Not this one.
Well, two out of three.
Well, November is coming Andy.
Fast.
Hey, I have a question. Uh, is there a stipend given as a head of the road crew or is it part of her salary, Public Works?
Public Works is part of the salary.
Thank you.
John, did you have any thoughts on this?
I'll talk about it when we see the budget.
Okay.
But, you know, generally speaking, I think, yeah, um, you get what you pay for.
Great.
Good, yeah.
Been my experience. Okay, well, I don't think we're gonna.
No, I, no, that's right.
More than that, but it's, it's interesting to get everyone's perspective on this and I'm sure that, uh, the other two members of the Board of Selectmen will, will hear about this and I'll probably hear about it myself.
You can blame me, Andy.
No, I won't throw anyone under the bus. Um, okay, uh, so the next item on the agenda uh, is, is also Nanette's fault. Um, but we do need to think about scheduling some extra meetings. Probably, uh, we should just schedule one right now and we can, um, go from there. But we should anticipate having at least two, possibly three special meetings, I think, because of the compressed, uh, time frame. So can we set the next one for, I don't have a calendar in front of me, uh, two weeks from today?
That's the thirtieth. Oh, uh, yes, it is. It's the thirtieth of, uh, March.
Hmm.
Um, does that work for everyone?
Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, then I will, uh, I will put out an agenda for the thirtieth then. Julie truly will remind me, as she always does. Thank you.
And our public hearing is, I, I thought I had it in my calendar, but I don't. Oh yeah, it's always near my birthday.
Okay, um, what else? Was there anything else anyone wanted to bring up?
No, great meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we got some good stuff done tonight.
And I think we need to give Kim a gift certificate for a nice jug of whiskey. You know, when I was on Wall Street and I'm one of my huge borrowers or hedge funds or any of these guys, where there was some question about available funds, um, it always came to me as the managing director and responsible for that relationship. And I would determine whether or not, and things would bounce, believe me, you never bounce billion-dollar relationships. Nor should a country bank do what they did, which could have hurt so many.
Yeah.
So many people.
Oh, yeah.
A mess.
Kim, I did have a big gin and tonic last night when I.
Well deserved, Kim. You know, I have to, I'm a fan of gin and tonics and I have to admit that it was only about two years ago that somebody made the point to me that really the tonic is two-thirds of the drink or half the drink perhaps. Um, you should spend money on good tonic. And it's like, well, duh. And so we buy Fever Tree tonic now and not Schweppes.
Refreshingly light.
The difference is astounding.
Yeah, same in this house.
So, anyway, now we've had our tip from Eloise. Is there anything, uh, relating to town business that we need to go over, uh, or is there a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Patrick, good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.